Pardon?
All right, I'd like to call the Tuesday, June 15th meeting of the St. Joseph County Board of Commissioners to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item on the agenda is the opening reading of bids. First item is quotes for 2021-22 janitorial supplies. Ms. Bree.
Bree Roberts with offices in this building on the seventh floor. The following vendors have submitted bids for janitorial supplies used by St. Joseph County offices for the 2021-2022 fiscal year as follows. Ferguson Supply, 1310 Prairie Avenue in South Bend. Interboro Packaging, 114 Bracken Road in Montgomery, New York. KSS Enterprises, 5053 Sports Drive in Kalamazoo, Michigan. Office 360, 7301 Woodland Drive in Indianapolis, Indiana. South Bend Chemical, 732 South Michigan Street in South Bend, Indiana. And Unipac, 2766 East 63rd Street, Brooklyn, New York. Were there any vendors who submitted a bid but whose name was not read aloud? In seeing none, I would ask that the board accept all bids for examination and turn them over to the Department of Procurement and Department of Maintenance for review and further recommendation.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
There's a motion to approve those or accept those bids offered.
Second.
Motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, Bree.
Thank you.
Mr. Sky.
Thank you. Sky Metters, county engineer, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth. Offices on the seventh and eleventh floor of this building. Wanted to just make an announcement. Two projects we have on changing the bid date to the two projects. The first project is one up to five tandem axle dump trucks with plow equipment. The original date bids were due for this was Tuesday, June 22nd, 2021. We are going to be amending the date of the bids due for this to Tuesday, July 6th, 2021. And the next project is RNS 92101-S, miscellaneous road resurfacing rehabilitation on various roads in districts one, two, and three. This is our subdivision package. And the original bid date for that was Tuesday, June 22nd, and that will be amended to Tuesday, June 29th. The reason for these amendments is to give the contractors more time to look at these projects in order to properly prepare their bids. I will be issuing an addendum to each of the plan holders to show this, and both projects have already been advertised. So just wanted to make that announcement.
Thank you. So counselor, there's no formal action we need to take other than what's just been taken? Excellent, thank you. Moving on to reports and requests. First is the Board of Commissioners. First item is the county's payable docket. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes. Next, we have one of the highlights of the month for us here at the Board of Commissioners, and that is we get to honor one of our great employees. Commissioner Fleming, turn things over to you.
Oh, well, go ahead. Come on up here and let us know because again, I'm excited that our employee of the month is Julie Tobey from 911 District Dispatch Center. So yeah, so let us know about it.
Good morning. Raymond Schultz, Executive Director of PSAP, Office 58266, Downey Avenue. Happy to be here today to, instead of asking for something, to present something. As I tell you, as a department head, it's amazing to have employees like Julie and then the folks that don't mind recognizing each other. This nomination came from two of Julie's coworkers, not from me. As a department head, it's tough to pick each bright shiny star because we have heroes every day that show up and do great things. And when they're recognized by their coworkers, it really means something special to me. So as part of the nomination, Julie was cited for being a great teammate. She walks in every day with a smile on her face, like most public safety folks do on their very first day. Bright eyed, bushy tailed, and ready to solve all the problems of the world. And that's Julie every day, no matter what's going on, stresses in her life, or the calls that come in. She is just a great coworker. She is an integral part of our district planning committee. She does a lot of work with our planning for disasters and resources for our center as well as the county. She was recognized as dispatcher of the year a couple of years ago, pre-COVID, for actions that she had taken as a member of the community, alerting us that a tornado was on the way and setting off the tornado sirens ahead of time. Julie, she's one of a kind. She's a special employee. I'm super proud of her and happy that she was nominated for this award.
We're happy too that this happened because again, in recognition of her dedication to the 911 Dispatch Center, representing the center of the LEPC and showing leadership and chairing the training committee. So it's very good that she is now employee of the month. Yay, good.
Anything you'd like to say? No pressure.
I'd like to thank.
But it is being recorded though, so just.
Julie Toby, I am honored to be recognized by my partners at work. I try to be a good leader for everyone. It's a very stressful job, and I'm all about planning for the future and making sure that we're prepared for anything bad to happen, and I will continue to do so. And that's it.
Wait, we're not done. Stay there. We go 71, clear for signal two? No. On behalf of myself, of listening to that radio for probably than Jamie Woods has been alive for a long time on both sides, I appreciate the work that you do and everybody there. Again, if you people pay attention to the weekly or daily stuff that put out, it's over 600 911 calls coming in, all the stuff that goes on, you guys working 12-hour shifts. These commissioners and our county council are doing as much as possible to help with the funding, the PSAP, everything. So we're working not as hard as you, but very hard to make sure everything is done where you guys have the resources, the personnel, the equipment, everything to do the job that you do, which is unbelievably stressful. So just from myself and the other commissioners, and if they want to chime in too, really appreciate the work that you do. It's unbelievably, if anybody ever wants to go there and sit in your chair with you for eight, 12 hours, I think they'll get an entirely different perspective, the amount of stuff that you have to do, multitask, go from shooting to saving somebody on the phone to a cat in the tree, everything that goes on on a daily basis. So fantastic job and keep up the good work. And I think Raishy has use of your vehicle for a week. I believe that's part of the.
That's why.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
I just also want to say that we don't often hear positive things about things that are happening in the county, and 911 is no different. But I can say that your name has come across my email, my desk, phone calls about the great job that you're doing, the leadership that you portray there, and you're one of the best in a very, very challenging department. And so thank you so much for, quite frankly, making Ray look good because. So if you want to come up, we can take a picture, please. Ray, you might as well come up there too. All right. Can you play softball? All of us need more people for their tax or for our softball team. Nice job, congratulations.
Thank you.
Might have to be on the bench now, Sky.
All right, moving on to our awards for the month. We're going to postpone those for a week because of scheduling conflict. So we will award our Business Citizen and Youth of the Month at our claims meeting next week. Next up, we have an agreement with Melcon Consulting for excise fuel tax refund claiming. Charles.
Good morning, Commissioners. Charles Melonowski, President of Melonowski Consulting, and those folks who are further south in the state of Indiana. Melcon, it's great to be back in St. Joseph County, South Bend. And I would have to say, welcome to newest commissioner. I don't believe that we've been in front of you since you've come on board, but Melcon has had the great fortune, great partnership with St. Joseph County probably of the 15 years of the 17 years we've been in business. We've worked with a number of departments primarily in the Title 4D area, the Child Support Enforcement, so there's a federal reimbursement. And that's really what our essential focus is, is trying to get money back to the county from outside sources, whether they're the federal government, the state government, or other entities. So in that umbrella, a program that we've come across in the last three years that's been established for many, many years within the state of Indiana and probably nationwide is the state of Indiana will refund excise fuel taxes to any entity, whether you're the city, the county, or a farmer, an individual business. It all depends on how the vehicle or the fuel is used. So now, we're not talking about sales tax because you do not pay sales tax. So just for any of those listening in, the excise fuel tax funds state roads, state highways, local streets, county roads, all that good stuff. And what's neat about this program is that the refund that the state pays out if you participate, that's the number that comes off the top in the statewide distribution to counties, cities, and other for the fuel taxes. And to that end, it was back in early May, I had a visit with the, let's say you call it the Infrastructure Planning and Growth. Couple of the key members there, that was Chip, I believe. Yeah, and he has now moved on. But, and a great meeting with him and Noel Snyder. So to review a couple of things and how you manage fuel within the county. And over the years, Melcon has usually been introduced by a department head to present our agreement with the commissioners. In this case, although the information is critical and housed in the infrastructure department, we didn't have that department, Mr. Sky, present or whomever is present our agreement because it's really greater than just highway, shall we say. So how this fuel program works is if you're using fuel for off-road purposes, gasoline or diesel fuel, you get a refund of the 51 cents a gallon or 31 cents for diesel or unleaded. So that would be like a greater stationary equipment, a backhoe, rollers. And then we have something called proportional use. Proportional use is, think of a dump truck, the fuel tank that runs the engine that wears out the road that you pay excise tax on, a portion of that drives the dumper. So in that case, we're looking at 25% of a dump truck's fuel, whether diesel or unleaded, is refundable. So we need to look at those different types of pieces of equipment, bucket trucks, again, that proportional use. And it doesn't just apply to traditional highway, it would be in any department. So if parks, I haven't gone through the list, but this is one of the things we want to look at, what the fleet is, what are the equipments? The maintenance department. If you're cutting grass, you're pushing snow, there's an opportunity for a refund. And then the third is any vehicle that's used in public transportation. I would point to a veteran service van and community corrections. So if you have those 10, 12 passenger vans, 100% of that fuel is refundable. What's really neat about this, and I'm just about done kind of giving the whole overview here, what's really neat about this program and what we're trying to present is for Melcon to start with the initial claiming, and we can go back three years to get the whole process started. And so there's a bit of a windfall, and one of the things that we make sure we do is we separate the refund by county fund. So if it's coming back to the general fund, it was paid out of the general fund, we will identify the refund that goes to the general fund. We will also identify the portion that goes back to the highway fund. So whoever pays it gets the credit for the reimbursement. And the last thing I'd like to add is that this program is not very well advertised by the state of Indiana. So it should not look poorly upon county employees that, well, why haven't we been doing this in this department, that department, or another? Because it's just not known. Like I said earlier, we only came across this about three years ago. So it's, again, it's new to us, but here we have an opportunity to get you started, do a revision, excuse me, do a retroactive claiming, and then with our agreement, it's a little bit different than everything we've done before. It's, you can terminate it, well, number one, you can terminate it at any time for any reason, but it's a shared reimbursement. So we won't get paid until the county gets paid, and there's a cap to our fee. And with that, I will open it up to questions.
Any questions?
Sure.
Comments?
On page three of this handout here, are these just estimated quarterly refunds that could occur with this?
Page three. What we're trying to do in the fee computation example, that's what we're looking at?
Right.
That, yeah, we process the claims quarterly. So essentially, it's, our fee is 50% up to $500 a month. So if you got $1,000 refund, the county received $1,000 refund, our fee would be $500 that we would bill you after the fact. Now, if all you get is $500, then our fee would be 250 for that month.
Right. But do you have any data of or projection of what are the county's outlay would that be on the expense?
Well, no, I can't estimate, not in this case of savings, I can't estimate savings. And it's not savings, it's a refund.
Right.
The numbers are so large and the data is so complex, we need to crunch the numbers. But the advantage of this particular agreement is that it's contingent. So we will report to you, we will tell you what a good job that we're doing in cooperation with the team members in the infrastructure department. But at this point, we don't know, but we are certain that it's going to be more than $1,000 a month on a number of highway miles you have, the type of vehicles, the type of equipment, those sorts of things, just in what we would look at traditionally as the highway department. But at this point, we don't know what the recoveries would be. But we're very optimistic, and that's why I'm here today, that we're going to get at a minimum $1,000 a month. We're going to meet our goal to get our full fee, and we want to double, triple that or more. And I know that doesn't give you a specific.
Any other questions or comments?
I just want to make sure that, so what this is, is just helping us get the tax refund to our county, right, that we hadn't done in the past, so we would get more.
Yes, it's very similar. So the process that the county and us together would go through is, number one, identifying the fleet. What's in the fleet? How those pieces of equipment or vehicles use the fuel? And then extracting the data out of your terrific fueling system, and I'll have to say that Noel was really helpful in providing us some preliminary reports there that provide all of the audit support for the Indiana Department of Revenue, and then putting that together with proof of paid taxes, paid invoice. So it's kind of a three-part to that to get it up and running.
Awesome. Any other questions or comments?
I have no further questions.
Is there a motion?
I highly recommend this firm. They do great work with the auditor's office, so.
Melcon has saved between 4D money, between jail reimbursement, federal jail reimbursement money, has brought back hundreds of thousands of dollars to the county. So I think this is well worth our time. Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve about this Melcon Consulting for the excise fuel tax refund claiming.
Second.
Motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes. Next, Indiana Department of Revenue, power of attorney for excise fuel tax refund claiming. Mr. Woods. Questions or comments? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve this revenue power of attorney for excise fuel.
Motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, Charles.
Well, thank you, Commissioners. It's always a pleasure, and this is a really exciting, a different project that, again, we're excited to get some money back to you in a different department. And working with Mr. Sky and the other teams down or up the hall. Regarding, you have the agreements to sign, working on those right now?
Yeah, we'll do those at the meeting.
Terrific, terrific. The only thing that we're missing, and I pass it on to Auditor Mike, is the county's tax ID number that we'll need to pick that up when we file the power of attorney. Terrific.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to resolution, R19C2021, opting out of opioid settlement pursuant to IC46152.
At the end of the legislative session this year, the state adopted legislation that automatically would consider locally units of government to be part of any settlement, and the state would reach with opioid manufacturers. The state is negotiating or has negotiated a settlement. By this resolution, at the recommendation of our council in Indianapolis, that is representing us and other units of government, we would opt out of the state's settlement. This is not necessarily a permanent thing. Discussions are ongoing between state officials and legal counsel for the various units of government here in the state. So we can opt out today. We have the option of opting back in within 60 days as negotiations continue to evolve in this matter. So it's the recommendation of our council in Indianapolis that you adopt resolution number R19C2021.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Woods? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve this resolution to opting out of the opioid settlement.
Second.
If motion to second, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes. Also want to thank Mr. Woods for all the diligence and the hard work he has done throughout this. We were ahead of the curve when it comes to taking action to try and seek some financial restitution from the drug manufacturers, and then I think we've seen the state kind of step in later on to muddy the waters a bit. But anyway, I appreciate Jamie staying on top of this for the county. And then we've got notice of election to opt out of opioid settlement pursuant to IC46152.
This is just the formal notice of election that will be signed by the president of the Board of Commissioners. I would ask you to approve this form of the notice of election.
Questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this form.
Second.
We have motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes. All right, next up, bills passed by the St. Joseph County Council at a public hearing held on June 8th, 2021, council took the following action. Bill 4921, ordinance 4921, salary amendment for Portage Manor, as was Bill 5821, ordinance 5021. Salary amendment for the Health Department is Bill 5721, 5121. Probate court salary amendment, Bill 5921, ordinance 5221, as well as Bill 6021, ordinance 5321. Bill 5621 is the, and ordinance 5421 is the monthly transfer and appropriation. And then Bill 5221, ordinance 5821 is a fees and rate petition by the Health Department, kind of to bring those more in line. Any questions or comments regarding any of these items? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve all these ordinances.
Second.
We have motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes. Right, Frank, come up and kind of update us on one of the items that was passed in the transfer and appropriation bill, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. Frank Fotio with Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth. As part of this month's appropriations and transfers bill was appropriating funds for our restaurant innovation grants. So much like the cities of South Bend and Mishawaka, those restaurants that are in the unincorporated areas of the county as well as in the towns as well, who were able to invest some money to remain open during the 2020 when many restaurants had to pivot, like all of us during the COVID pandemic, make investments to either allow them to do more carryout activities, invest in PPE, invest in Plexiglas Shield so that they could still remain open, are eligible to apply for grants up to $2,000 to be reimbursed for those expenses. I'd like to also thank the South Bend Regional Chamber for partnering with us and helping us administer those grants. The applications are available on the county's website at sjcindiana.com/igr.
Thanks, Frank. Want to thank Frank for his hard work with this. I see Rick from the chamber is on the call as well. They've been, continue to be a great partner, and this is a way that we can play some small role in helping some restaurants and establishments who struggled during COVID, that we can provide a minimal amount of assistance as a showing of gratitude for the hard work and what they do. So, but a great partnership with the chamber for them handling this, and it's an easy form too. It's a one-page, it's, we try to make this not very burdensome at all, so hopefully folks take advantage of this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Glad to be helping the restaurants here. Good.
All right, moving on. Health Department requests approval to apply for grant funds to assist the Indiana Department of Health with COVID-19 vaccine promotion. Good to see you, Amy.
Amy Rupee, Administrator for the Department of Health with offices on the eighth and ninth floor of the county city building. And before you is a request of support for a grant through the Indiana Department of Health to help get COVID vaccines to minority and underserved population within our county.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to apply for this grant.
Second.
Motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes. Then next, we have request approval to apply for Title V grant funds for fetal infant mortality review program.
Yes, this is a request for support for a grant that we have had for a few years. This is a renewal of the grant. This year, the grant cycle will be for two years, and it will expire in 2023.
Questions or comments? Is there a motion?
A motion to renew this grant.
Second.
Motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to infrastructure planning and growth. First item is the consent agenda. We have an irrevocable letter of credit for Augustine Lake. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve this consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion to second, and those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Moving on, request approval of court award for 2021 CCAP paving.
Sky Matters, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, offices on the seventh and 11th floor of this building. What I have before you today is a request to, uh, requests to approve the quote for our 2021 CCAP paving for milestone contractors in the amount of $175,224.
Questions or comments? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve this quote award for a milestone contract.
Second.
Motion to second, and those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Next, request approval of a court award for 2021 salvage roadway material for sub base.
What we have here is a request to approve the quote for salvage roadway materials for sub base from milestone contractors in the amount of $195,638.95.
Questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this court award with the, with the milestone.
A motion to second, and those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Request approval of a bid award for S 58062516, small structure replacement.
We have reviewed the bids that we received for the project. We received two bids for this project, which is to replace a couple structures on Inwood and Strawberry Road at Nesbitt Johnny Ditch, and also at a tributary to Nesbitt Johnny Ditch. And after reviewing the bids, we request that Northern Indiana Construction Company be awarded the contract in the amount of $638,610.35. Funds for this project are available in the New Carlisle Economic Development Area TIF bond for this project.
Any questions or comments?
Good job, appreciate the fine work on that side of the county. Those bridges of people who've never been out there need some work, so appreciate everybody going out there to tighten that up a little bit.
Yep.
Sounds good. Anything we can do from a redevelopment standpoint to support the fine folks of that, the New Carlisle area? That's, glad to see if doing that as well, eh? All right, if there are no other questions or comments, is there a motion?
A motion to approve this bid award to the Northern Indiana Construction Company.
Second.
Motion to second, and those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, Sky. Next, resolution R 21C 2021, authorizing addendum to real estate purchase agreement for 20359 Jewel Avenue FEMA house buyout grant. Mr. Chris.
Good morning, commissioners. Chris Brown, Economic Development Specialist with Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, offices on the seventh and 11th floors. Before I get into this amendment real quick, I wanted to provide you an update on the FEMA process itself. Right now, we've got nine homes that are ready for demolition. We are working on, or waiting on FEMA approval for the fire trainings, which we've discussed in previous meetings. That has taken a little bit longer than we anticipated. I guess there is a secondary approval process for FEMA to approve those, so it's not just our contacts that IDHS has. So we are waiting on that. Because of that, IDHS recommended requesting an extension of that 90-day demo period. So from closing to this 90-day, that is when we had to have the homes down in. And so they've requested that, they are requesting to FEMA that we extend that time period so that we can get the approval for the fire trainings. This also allows us for that decision, but also allows us to cluster more homes for the construct, for the demo contractors. Keeps their costs down, and then therefore keeps our costs down. So just real quick update, we anticipate approval of those fire trainings here, just taking a little bit of extra time, as it always does with the federal government, so.
For the update?
Quick update on that. So this amendment right here is similar to ones we've done previously. This is allowing for flexibility of the homeowners to move into their new house. So it's requesting a 30-day from that closing date to move out, and then also allows for fixtures, HVAC, things like that, that were probably new after the flood, that could still be used to be taken out as well. There anything, any questions? Be happy to answer them.
You want to thank again, Chris, and the IPG team for the hard work. I mean, this has been a project that's been, has been undertaken for the last four or five years, so it's great to see us continue to inch forward. So any questions or comments?
How did we get the, or how did these nine houses get on the list?
So back in 2016, when the floods happened, the homes, we had, what was it, 17 homes that we were looking at? We did some hydrologic studies, we did some kind of the proximity to the ditch. So basically, we formed kind of a phased approach to which homes would have the priority to go. And then we came up with a list of the first 15 to 17, based off proximity, based off of the least amount of water that would cause the most flooding. So based on how, how, you know, how elevated they were in that area. And those were the first ones that were applied for with the grant.
Right. And then, totally, then we were able to help all the people and all that during the process, which was probably time-consuming and stressful for everybody, so.
It's, 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 it's a bittersweet thing, but FEMA also says this is the best way to mitigate flooded areas and everything. It's just to get the home, get the homeowners out of there and, and demo the homes, and then keep it as greenfield.
Okay. Well, thank you guys for doing all that work that's quite consuming.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve this resolution R dash 21 dash C dash 2021 to real, to amend this real estate purchase agreement.
Second.
Motion to second, and those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you very much.
Next, request approval of a professional service proposal for the Capitol Avenue Trail segment. Mr. Bill.
Good morning, Bill Shalillo, Economic Development, part of the IPG team, with offices on the seventh, 11th floor. Professional service proposal before you today is with Christopher B. Burke Engineering to complete design work for a segment of, of new walk and trail between McKinley, or between Capitol Avenue and Current Drive on McKinley Highway. This work that'll be done will connect that section of sidewalk that exists to the east to Capitol Avenue. When this work is complete, and when future work is complete on the Birch Road to Ash Road section in 2023 and 2024, I believe, then we will have sidewalk all the way from County Line to Capitol, and then all the way through the county up to the state of Michigan, through the trail systems, through the community. The work before you today is for design work for about 1,800 feet of trail. The work scope has been previously approved by the Redevelopment Commission at its meeting last week. The total work is not to exceed $17,900, and staff would request your approval, please.
Questions or comments?
Yes, I have one, maybe two. The, do they, do you have a projected use by people once this would be completed?
So we've seen, just with even a little stretch of, of trail that was built on Jefferson a year ago, that people are starting to use Capitol Avenue. Part of the problem with the Capitol Avenue Trail, and there's almost 10 and a half miles of trail that exist along Capitol Avenue. Part of it is, it just doesn't connect to the neighborhood. So we would anticipate, this was actually, this, this work here is actually a request of Councilman Mark Root and Councilman Mark Etanzerite earlier this year, saying, you know, we've got neighborhoods out here that don't connect to Capitol Avenue, you're looking to do this, can you put us on the list? So timing worked out, and, and what we're hoping to do with this design is pair it with work we're already doing on Capitol Avenue, where we've designed a segment of missing trail from the bridge north to Jefferson, so that we can apply for the next level trail grant later this year, or maybe it's a ready grant type proposal or something like that. So there's lots of money around, this would be a great opportunity to get this work done.
So when it's built, they will come?
People are already there.
Yes, they will.
Yes, but they certainly will come more.
Okay, cool. Appreciate it. Nice job. Thank you.
I just want to say, too, that what I've noticed is that there's more and more people riding their bicycles and walking down Capitol. But now that we've connected the streets there on Jefferson, they're actually riding down their bicycles and they're walking down that way better with the, with the sidewalks in place. So I think this would be good, too, to help people, so it's more, it's safer for people there, too. I appreciate that so much.
There are no more questions or comments, is there a motion?
A motion to approve this professional service proposal for the Capitol Avenue Trail segment.
Second.
Motion to second, and those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Next, request approval of an addendum to a rail crossing safety project.
In August 2020, the Redevelopment Commission and the Board of Commissioners approved an agreement with the Pioneer Rail Corporation to provide upgrades to two intersection, or two rail crossings, one at Bittersweet and one at Ash Road. Through the course of the project that is now complete, there were additional funds that needed to be allocated to this project. What we're asking for is to do an addendum, or asking your approval on an addendum, in the amount of $55,567, to bring the total project up to $407,467 for these two intersection improvements. And so these are fantastic improvements. If you haven't driven over these, it's, it's some of the best work I think I've seen done at a rail crossing in years. Great safety upgrade, and, and so we appreciate your support, and would appreciate your support on this addendum. Please.
Any questions or comments? So actually, we can't take questions from the.
I'm sorry.
From the, from the crowd at this point, but, but we could certainly, though, afterward, we can get you the, the information that you need, or.
Yeah, I'm glad to see this being updated and improved.
True.
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
There's a motion to approve this addendum to a rail crossing safety project.
Second.
Motion to second, and those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. All right, now we move on to old business. We have an Infrastructure Planning and Growth Resolution R 20C 2021, authorizing inter-local agreement for the construction of an entrance roadway for the Penn Township Fire Station Number 13 project. I think the first item is to have that untabled and put back to active business. Does that motion exist?
Don't move.
Second.
Motion to second, and those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes.
Before you today is Resolution RC 20 dash 2021, which was formerly RC dash 15 dash 2021, when it was presented back in April on the 20th. On April 20th, the Board of Commissioners tabled this resolution due to a request for additional funds by Penn Township to cover additional project costs. While we continue to work with Penn Township to determine what cost would be or would not be eligible for their project, the Redevelopment Commission at its meeting last week made a motion and approved a motion to fund the original $500,000, and to continue to have discussions with Penn Township on additional funds that may be needed for this project. So staff would request approval of RC 2021 in the amount of $500,000 to provide funding to Penn Township. This was money that was in the budget, it was budgeted for this project, and we would support this as we move forward. And ask for your approval, please.
Questions or comments? Bill, thank you for the work in clarifying some confusion with Penn Township. If there are no other questions or comments, is there a motion?
There is a motion to approve this resolution of RC dash 21, moving forward.
Second.
Motion to second, and those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Moving on to public comments, are there any public comments? Please state your name and address for the record, and you've got three minutes to address the board.
Good morning. My name is Dan Carter, and I live on Edison, 25285 Edison Road, South Bend, Indiana, 46628. I come here, and I, I'd like to suggest that the county look into creating safer and quieter railroad crossings in the Lydic community. There are four railroad crossings that I'm interested in, is Pine Road, Sage, Tulip, and Smilax. Pine Road needs quad gates to keep the drivers from going around the gates when the freight trains are going so slow, and they begin to stop. The drivers begin to learn this, and they try to beat the train. At the same time, there are many other faster trains coming through at the same time, and this is when you have the accident. You have a variety of trains going through this area, they're ranging from, you have trains 60 to 70 miles an hour going through this corridor. There are three other railroad crossings, Sage, Tulip, and Smilax. These railroad crossings become the safest by optimizing the existing gates that are already there. There are four gates at each of these crossings, the, to prevent any vehicles from going across the tracks. The two inner gates need to be moved to the outer side of the three tracks to create a quiet, to create this quad gate setup. So these gates are on precast foundations, they would just need to be dug up, moved over, and rewired and reprogrammed for the delay of the exiting gate. Once these gates are moved, they would create the safest railroad crossing possible. Now here's the beauty of all this, the county could establish a quiet zone all the way from Smilax Road, all the way into South Bend and through Mishawaka. It's a win-win situation for the people that live in the, and visit the Lydic area. They could enjoy the good quality of life, including the players of the Little League, the people visiting the park, the handicapped clients at the Rains of Life, the kids at the United Methodist Church daycare, they could take good naps and play outside without these noisy trains going through. Church sermons there wouldn't be interrupted, and the patrons at pages, pazes, could enjoy their dinners without the noisy train horns, and their property values would improve in the area also. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments? Is there a, all right.
Okay.
Any other, thank you, Dan. Any other public comments? Seeing and hearing none, I'll make a last call for public comments. All right, the motion to recess is in order.
Second that.
Motion to second, and those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Tough luck, we are recessed.